They're all there, so that definitely helps in this situation.
I know, I think that too. We, so, so I don't, I don't know how, I, I think a lot of us are familiar with you. You've been a source in our paper before with some of your other work, but not so much in, in regard to the school district and, and running for school board. So if you would, Whitney, just tell us, uh, give us a little bit of an overview of, of your background and, and the sort of skills and experiences that you've had that you think would lend themselves well to, to, uh, service on the school board.
You bet. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity, uh, to do this. I always appreciate a platform where our voices can be heard. So thank you very much. Um, the TH has been a wonderful partner of multiple facets of my life, whether it be, uh, my professional career or my personal career. So I really appreciate the voice that you allow us in this community. So thank you so much for that. Um, again, my name is Whitney Sanger. I am in my professional life, I am Creative Communications and Development Director for HACAP. Um, they're a little bit newer here in the community, but it's a Hawkeye Area Community Action Program. They, uh, actually took over Operation New View. And I am the Creative Communications and Development Director, uh, for them. So I serve all nine counties in which they operate, Dubuque being one of them. Beyond that, um, I am co-founder and president of a nonprofit called Project Rooted, um, which most of you are probably familiar with because that's typically, um, what is shared through the TH. And that organization has a mission of connecting kids to real food from the ground up. Um, and we do that through access, outreach and education as well. Um, that is a volunteer role for me, so it's not something that I get paid for. Um, but it's my passion project, um, and it's my way to give back to the community in an area that I love. Um, we hired our very first employee for that, so that is a huge success for Project Rooted to be able to do that. Um, she is our Farm to School Outreach Coordinator. So this year, we're actually going to be in each and every one of our elementary schools in Dubuque and also the county as well. Um, so we're starting to implement education in that area too. Uh, beyond my role and just my career life, um, I try to be involved in the community as much as I possibly can. Um, so I'm, I'm sit on the board for Young Professionals of Dubuque. I'm the Chair of the Women's Giving Circle. Um, I'm on the Dubuque County Food Policy Council. I'm a Commission Member for the Resilient Community Advisory Commission. Um, and then I'm also on Association of Fundraising Professionals and then Rotary as well. Um, so those are all aspects that I try to be ingrained in the community. Each of those really has a mission, um, to serve the community and kids that live here. And then I'm a mom of five kids, um, nine and under. Um, so I have nine, uh, seven, four, two, and then a four-month-old. Um, two are currently in the Dubuque Community School District. I have a fourth grader and a first grader this year, um, and they go to Eisenhower. So that's my, my biggest why. I'm going to be in this district for eighteen-plus years. So I, more than anyone, am invested and want to see it thrive. Um, so a lot of that passion lies within my own kids, but also the rest of the kids in the community. Um, so I have that like deep-rooted connectedness with kids. Um, and I try to do as much as I can for children, which is why we started, um, Project Rooted in the first place and why I am running for school board today. Um, a lot of these different organizations are really about educating kids, building partnerships, co-creating a future that we all can be proud of. Um, I'm a Dubuque native. I was born and raised here, so my roots go really deep into the community. Um, and I want to continue to see it grow and be better and do better and create an environment that is welcoming and equitable to all. And I believe I can have that voice for the Dubuque Community School District.
Okay, great. Thank you. What, what, uh, what are some key issues as, as you head into this? Uh, when you look at the district, what are some things that, that you think? What's the district doing right? What could the district maybe use some, some work on?
Yeah, so I went into this, just like every other candidate thinking, these are my goals, these are my initiatives, this is what I want to accomplish. Um, after meeting with multiple board members, um, and multiple district members as well, I made an opportunity to meet with the Director of Elementary Education, Director of Secondary Education, Director of Finance, Food and Nutrition, Equity Director and Director of Student Services. So I took time out of my day to really gain the knowledge from them because they're in it. I'm just on the parent side of things, so I don't always see all aspects and all facets of how things operate or run. So while I came in with my goals and initiatives, which still hold true today, I also know that it's really important to reach out to those that are in the thick of it and be able to pivot and adapt, um, to what their needs currently are. I think that in this time and atmosphere and world that we're currently in, I think that the district is doing a phenomenal job handling it. Is it perfect? No, but is anything? I mean, we've all had to try to navigate, um, COVID and, and adapt so much. And they have over ten thousand kids in the district that they're working with. Um, so first of all, I applaud them for all the efforts that they've done, um, to make it a successful year for all kids. From meeting with these individuals, I think that some of the biggest barriers they have right now is loss of learning. Um, so this is something that we, we talk about a lot. I had a kindergartner last year, um, so that was his first year of school. So to start kindergarten in a, you know, virtual and in-person world was different for him. It was, it was new. We were trying to navigate that, not only on the parent's side, but the teachers were too. And then this year, he's there full-time. So he's trying to get used to that all-day-long schedule. Now, this holds true for a lot of kids. Um, you know, he just started last year, but there was kids that started kindergarten and half their year was gone. So now they're in, you know, an upper level and teachers are just trying to find where each student is at and what their needs are because they are really all at different levels. We've had kids that did all hybrid, we have kids that did, you know, a mixture, and then they went to all-in-person. So they're all just at different skill sets, they're just getting used to the classroom. Um, so I think that's one barrier for teachers is just almost like starting over in school. They're basically re-teaching kids to what a full day of learning looks like. So that's half the barrier, especially in the beginning of the school year. When I talked with them, they said they're starting to get that group back. Um, but there's still a lot more assistance that they need and support on the family level, on the community level and in school as well. So I think that's one of the biggest challenges that they face is that loss of learning. Um, I think that they've been able to get some financial support to help tackle that. So a lot of the SRARP funding, um, will go towards that and really helping students get back on track. Um, so I think that's really important and the district is already making those strides to make that happen. Um, so again, I applaud them for all the work they're doing there. I know another big one that we're all seeing and we're all trying to figure out is workforce. Everybody is short-staffed in every single industry. And for teachers, that's really hard. And a lot of that stems from only already having so much planning time for their kids in their day. Um, so I know at the high school level, they have one period to plan for their classes. So one period that they have to ensure that they have their lessons ready, you know, they're grading their test scores, they're planning everything out for the day. And that's pretty easy to take away when we already have short staffed and they're filling in for other teachers, or they might be picking up a lunch shift, or they're meeting with more and more students because they're behind. Um, so I would say workforce is definitely something that we have to work on. But I think that's a community-wide effort. So getting, um, you know, people, teaching people about education and the benefits of education and going into that field, um, finding new and creative ways to recruit new talent. Um, working collaboratively with the area schools, including NICC and Clark and UD and Loris. I think all those collaborations are a key part to making that, um, a success. And I think they're making strides in that and they're doing their best. I know they've come up with some fun initiatives, um, but it's still going to be a challenge, just like it is for everyone. And we're just trying to figure out why it is the way it is. There's all this research, um, that people are doing, so I think it's just trying to navigate that. That is really hard for the district.
Mm-hmm. And then, oh. We, we've written some about the, the, the shortage of substitute teachers. Are there, is the district, um, they have teaching positions that are also unfilled? Is that what you're referring to or?
Yeah, I think, and I had to have to look back at my notes on how many open positions that they have, but I do know substituting was a, a huge part of it. That was one of the things that they said. And PERS too. I know there's a big struggle.
Sure.
And PERS as well, and those are the assistance to the teachers in a lot of the classrooms. So it's, it's definitely a struggle in that area too. I know even my kids' classes, they have PERS. Um, and when they do it, it throws off the whole, you know, atmosphere of the class, so it makes it tough.
Mm-hmm. How did you find the, the technology piece, both from a parent perspective, um, as far as district preparedness for that? And, and where does the district need to, to grow in that area?
Yeah, we, so going back to that, I mean, we were in COVID. So even the technology was, is more of a supply chain issue and preparing for that. Um, not the district's fault, we were just at the mercy of the environment that we were in. So there was a delay in that, um, I know, which made it really hard in just getting the technology here. I know internet access was also really difficult, but I do know they made huge strides in ensuring families had access to that. Um, I would say, you know, with hybrid learning, we all did the best we can in teaching and advocating for our kids. And our, the teachers respected wherever that was. Um, and, and that was a huge part of it too. So I had a kindergartner, again, who is not very technologically savvy. Um, so that was something where parents actually had to be by their side in navigating that. Versus my third grader, he could log in, do his homework by himself and get connected that way. So I think each parent's experience is going to be much different in that area. Um, and it's important to listen to all parents from different spectrums and understand what worked, what didn't work. Um, what can we do better? I think it's always important to enact it, but then reevaluate it. Um, technology right now is not an issue for our household, but I'm sure other families are experiencing that, um, still. So where are we lacking again? Where can we do better for the community? Um, especially for those that maybe not have internet access. Um, but I do believe they did the best they can, um, in the situation that we are in and as quick as they had to do it. So, um, I'm thankful for that as a parent. Again, we're just at the mercy of our environment and what that looks like. So I do know they're making great strides. I know more, you know, money is going towards technology and what that looks like, not only outside of our schools, but in our schools too. Um, so I like to continue, continue to see that as well.
I'll, I'll jump in here. So, uh, one of the things that, uh, has been discussed, uh, by the school board recently is just kind of the, the future of the district facilities. You know, there's been some talks and, and some, uh, projected cost savings, if they were consolidate different schools. Um, also some discussion about the West End and the South, or Southwest arterial and, and eventual growth out that way. And, and maybe the district, you know, looking at, at planning for another school out, out that direction. I'm just kind of curious, um, what your thoughts are on the state of the facilities in the district and, and where we kind of go in the future.
You bet. So I know the school district is committed to making improvements wherever they, um, see the need. So obviously, right now, that is, uh, Dubuque's senior high school, they're in, you know, the second phase of that. So improvements are lying there. Um, when it comes to, like you said, the consolidation, moving of schools, redistricting and things like that, I think that, that is something that they're going to be discussing here in the near future. Um, it's a discussion I hope to be a part of. But one of my biggest things through that discussion is ensuring that you're involving the community as much as you possibly can to learn what the best route to go is. Um, so that collaboration, community input is huge. So I personally, um, don't have that knowledge or background. I haven't, you know, talked to families about that yet, but I would be committed to ensuring that that's the way that we approach it. Um, I follow a really unique, um, approach. It's called Strong Towns. I don't know if you've ever heard of it before, um, but they really take a bottom-up approach. Um, so whether it be a specific school, it's talking with parents, it's talking with fam- families, it's talking with neighbors. Um, it's making sure that you're listening to their needs first and foremost. Um, they also talk about the importance of neighborhood schools. So it's really diving in and looking into that and seeing what's best for the majority and the most. But I think that's a conversation that is going to take a lot of time. And I think that they're going to be very, um, I guess, aware that it's not just a quick fix. It's something that they're going to have to really dive in and do the research for. Um, and I would be committed to that too. I always have the belief that we need to, um, include community and as much as we can. It's why we had the Rooted Table. It's why we gathered, um, in a neighborhood and talked about resiliency, because we wanted to meet people where they were at. Um, and that's really, really important to me is hearing their voices. And that's not just with this, you know, um, whether it be redistricting or, or what, whatever they choose to do, um, but also strategic, strategic planning, um, and listening to parents and their needs on a regular basis too. So I don't have a short answer for that. Um, I think it's something that is going to take a lot of time, a lot of commitment, a lot of dedication, and something that I'm willing to do as well. But I do know there's a big cost savings and, you know, multiple ways that you look at it. So it's also taking that into account too.
Do you think if they were, if we were looking at some more centralized schools or consolidation of schools, um, to what degree do you think it's important, uh, or should the district consider uh, sort of evening out, uh, the number of, of, uh, the students by social economics? Um, uh, you know, a, along, you know, to make each school somewhat equally diverse in terms of, of race and, and social economics? Is that a consideration?
Yeah, so from my understanding, that's, from my understanding and speaking with Stan about this, um, is that Senior and Hempstead is pretty equally divided when you look at all those areas. Um, so if you're consolidating schools, I, I do think that's really important. Um, but also ensuring that, you know, schools are walkable, bikeable, there's all, you know, easy access for families, there is some, some sense of community. I think that's all really important as well. Um, but it would definitely be something to look like, look at. But from my understanding, it is pretty equal in those areas, um, for Senior and Hempstead already.
And in, in reference to your comment about, um, you know, getting the community input, do you, have, have there been issues in the last few years, um, in, in your experience where, where the district maybe didn't, uh, reach out and get as much community input as you would have liked to have seen?
Um, I think as a parent, they've actually done a, a pretty great job at it. Um, I'm a little unique though in the fact that I typically reach out too. Um, so it goes both ways. They'll put out some information and I try to follow up as much as I can so I can fully understand it. Um, I think we all can be better communicators, um, in every facets of our life. I mean, sometimes we all struggle with that, but I think they're overall doing a fantastic job. I mean, you even look at everything, even last board meeting, we had a communication directly after that. Like, it wasn't even the next day, it was minutes after we had a board meeting. And I think that's something, um, that my size is really good at, is making sure that it's out there as soon as they possibly can and that they are engaging the community. And I know they sent out surveys, um, they asked families what they wanted. Um, I think, I think it's really good to get community input in that way. And so like, I really appreciate that, um, as a parent, that they've been doing. I think they've been doing a pretty great job at that with the resources that they have. So, um, it's not easy.
Okay.
There's been a lot of communication that they've had to do in the past year. Um, and I think, I think they're doing a great job.
Okay, thanks.
So Whitney, one of the more, uh, polarizing issues in schools right now, not just in Dubuque, but everywhere, is masks. And, and so I'm, I'm curious to your thoughts on, um, masks in schools. And, you know, we've reported on it, um, to a great deal. And, um, the, the board's latest decision. I'm just curious to your, curious to your overall thoughts on that issue.
You bet. Uh, the school district, first of all, whether it be Stan and the entire board, um, I thank them very much for how they approached the situation. Um, so they sat there in the Hempstead Auditorium and listened for over three hours to every single parent's input that wanted to stand up that night. And I think that is huge. I know a lot of other districts haven't even done that. They've done it behind closed doors, they've already made the decision. And so for them to allow that community input, um, has been huge. Beyond that, I've personally written emails and I know others have, and I did get a response back from about half of them. Um, and I'm just one email, and I know they had hundreds that came in. Um, so also, again, I applaud the school board for the way they handled that and ensuring parents' voices did feel heard. Not only that, but then they went and listened to people a second time. Um, so it was, they followed up, they allowed thirty minutes for families to get up and speak. They ensured that it was done equally, um, which I thought was very beneficial to hear both sides equally, um, at the last board meeting, so I appreciate that very much. I think that there is always fear on both sides. Um, everybody has different experiences, whether it be, um, as a teacher, an educator, or as a parent. Um, I have my own personal experiences, so my, um, decision-making is based on, on those experiences, but also listening to others. So I even ask parents, you know, how do you feel about this situation? Um, what would you like to see? And I listened and I talked to people and I asked why they thought the way they thought. Um, so I think that's really important for everybody to do, even if you're not on the school board, is to understand where other people are coming from. I think that they made the best decision they could with the data that they had. So they were that, very data-driven, based on, um, you know, the COVID portal, looking at where we are at in cases, understanding that, um, and trying to come up with a solution that would, would one, um, you know, try to make as many families happy as they could. Um, they looked at how many people, you know, are currently wearing masks. They looked at what our COVID cases were. Um, they made a decision to say, if we get over this threshold, then this is what we're going to do. Um, so they were very strategic in it. I don't think it was a quick decision. I think the decision that they made, um, was well-thought-out and I, again, appreciate that very much. And I think it made parents feel a lot more, uh, comfortable with what they decided to do. Again, I have my own experience as a parent. I spoke at the last board meeting, um, or the one a few weeks back. Um, so you're more than welcome to listen to that as well. Um, but then again, those are my own viewpoints, but I would have done what they did as well and really listened to everybody's input, take it into consideration and do what's best for, um, the majority and the greater good.
Thank you.
Um, something that you talked about in an article that was actually posted on the TH was, um, seeing an increase in awareness in brain health.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can you talk a little bit more about that and kind of specifically what you'd like to see done about that?
You bet. Um, so brain health is something that is extremely important to me, um, because I went through it. And it's through lived experiences that those passions are really driven. So when I was in high school, um, I actually had an eating disorder. And I felt like at that time, there wasn't resources and tools that I could utilize, not only in our schools, but in our community as a whole. Now, brain health, um, is something that has gotten a lot more awareness, um, thankfully, in these past couple of years, and I greatly, greatly, greatly appreciate that. Um, because again, I went through it, I lived it, I have those experiences. Some areas that I would love to see that improve is, one, they're already doing great things. Um, so I actually got off a call, um, with Debbie Butler, and she's from Brain Health Now. Um, and one of the initiatives that they're going to be working on and that we're going to be hopefully collaborating on here with Project Rooted, is brain health retreat rooms. Um, the first one is going to be in Hempstead High School, and then that will be expanded to Senior as well. Um, it's initiatives like that, that not only bring awareness, but they reduce the stigma. They offer direct services for kids in the school, school day, um, and a place to just breathe. Um, just to, to be them, to be themselves.
Sorry, what did you call those? Uh, brain health?
Retreat rooms.
Retreat rooms, okay.
And so, and, um, and I don't want to speak too much on that because that is Debbie's initiative with Brain Health Now and it's her, um, her passion. So I know she could tell you a lot more about that specific initiative. But we're looking to partner in regards to food. Um, nutrition has such, uh, plays a vital role in brain health and what that looks like. Um, so we're going to be working with them to integrate Project Rooted within that. And I know other organizations are as well. Um, so that's at the high school level. Um, again, I think reducing the stigma as to what brain health looks like and brain health services look like. I know for my children specifically, and I know others probably feel like this too, um, they're embarrassed to have to seek services. So when they get pulled out of a classroom or, um, are recommended to go to a counselor, there's almost a negative stigma with something like that. So I think it's really important for us to address that as a community on a parent level, as a child level, um, and then in, as an educator as well. Um, so that stigma is, it, it's huge. We should never feel bad about not being okay. Um, so I want to help in that area as well. Other small steps that we can take, um, I think what, you know, two-by-two character development does in the school is huge. Um, I think what Mindful Minutes for School, Schools does in the school is also huge. Um, so whether it be, you know, that just meditation and breath work, what it means to be a good friend, um, positive attitudes, empathy, all these life skills are so important. So ensuring that we're continuing those collaborations with area organizations, I think will really start addressing those issues to, um, a bigger level. And I know that they've received, um, the school district received funding as well in regards to brain health. And really, again, a lot of that funding will go to having a full-time counselor in those brain health rooms. Um, but there's other areas of social, emotional learning that they're working on too, um, whether that be curriculum or just daily things in the classroom. One thing I would love to see is just daily check-ins. Um, one of the things that we do with our kids at night is high-low buffalo. So you share your high, you share your low, and you share a high. Um, and it's something that just creates like this positive communication. So imagine if we started every kid's day off with checking in with each other, seeing how they're doing, asking what they're feeling. So if someone says, "I'm feeling all sad today, I'm feeling a little blue," or "I'm feeling a little hungry," we know then how to adjust our teaching based on how they're showing up to the classroom that day. So again, it's that meeting kids where they're at in that day and maybe help changing some of those, um, some of the negative thoughts that go with that. So adding more positivity in their life, I think is really important. So I want someone to check in with me daily. Um, it's something that I've tried to do even, like on my Sanger for Schools Facebook page, is just do a daily check-in. Hey, how are you feeling today? We adults need that too. So it's not just kids, but it's also teachers. How are you feeling today, teachers? You know, where are you coming at? Are you, do you feel ready to learn? Um, are you excited? You know, just learning more about that and talking about it, talking about feelings. Because no feelings are bad. And once I think we realize that, it's such an important factor. So that's just like a fun little initiative that I would like to do. I know when my, um, grandfather was on the school board, one of the things that he did was just a word of the day. And they talked about that word of the day. Um, typically, they try to keep it in a, a positive word, so then it brought positivity into the children's day. So it's just a small, like, little acts that make such a huge difference.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, the high-low buffalo, a high, a low, and what was the third thing?
Buffalo is something funny, like you just share something. So you end it with like, uh, you can end it with a joke, you can end it with something funny that happened at school or just the morning, or just anything silly that you want to share. Um, so we do that every time around the dinner table. Um, so it, it just keeps conversation going. Um, it's a way for them to share a little bit more than, hey, how was your school day? Well, it's good, um, and then moving on. So that's just what we do in our family. Um, but there's a lot of other creative, unique ways I've seen other parents do it too.
So you mentioned, um, you know, doing some things, some, some teacher check-ins. Um, you, you, you mentioned, um, earlier in your, um, I guess, your, um, exploratory efforts to understand what's going on with, uh, um, school board that you had met with a number of the directors, um, within the school district. So, um, my question would be where you see your role being as it relates to the actual employees of the school system, um, when you're sitting on a school board, if you are? Um, do you, you feel the need to be engaged in their day-to-day activities? Or, um, that you sit at a, a level that is policymaking?
Um, I would definitely say policymaking is, I mean, that's really the role of the school board is one of the biggest things. So, um, that is our, that is the school board's job, is to ensure those policies are, are being followed and enacted. Um, I have been working through my, working through the entire policy handbook, which is super fun. Um, it's taken a while to read, but I'm trying. It's taken a while to read, but I'm trying to get to know each and every policy and how I can, you know, connect with those and understand them at a deeper level. So when I'm meeting with these individuals, I can ask these specific questions in regards to how, like, helping, I don't want to tell teachers how to teach. I'm not a teacher. That's not my job. I just want to get to know what their struggles are and how can we help? So I've been doing, just reaching out to different teachers in the district, you know, asking them, what do you, what would you like to improve, or what do you love, what would you like to improve, and how can we help make it happen? It's like, what resources do you need to enact those things that you want to do? And I think understanding that really helps shape those policies and what that looks like. So I've been doing that on an individual level, and again, just trying to get to know what their needs are. But I think we can reflect some of those in our policies that we do create.
And what were some of those things that you heard from those teachers?
Yeah, so they were, they were really all different. Brain Health was actually one of them. So just, you know, this past year and a half, I can't even imagine what their roles looked like. You know, they were planning for kids in the classroom and kids on hybrid and trying to ensure that they were keeping that all balanced. So I think that was definitely a struggle for them. So focusing on that, whatever that looks like, and I know the district saw that too, so they implemented the Lumen training, which focused specifically on that at the beginning of the year. I think it's continuing to do those type of things. So not just enacting, you know, one Lumen training, but ensuring that they're receiving those services and talking about it. So there's that follow-up through the rest of the year. I think that's huge. Another one was just, you know, having that planning time that we talked about, to kind of like sit, reflect, plan. So we'll sit, reflect, like evaluate, and then plan. And having that time to be able to do so is, you know, crucial. And when you take away that time, then it makes it a lot harder for the teacher in the day to do their job. So that was just another one, is ensuring, how can we, how can we make sure that they have the adequate time to plan? I know a lot of teachers do it beyond just the workday. So is there ways that we can be more flexible to help work some of that in their day? I know a lot of that is, you know, negotiated by the union as well, and it's part of that. But a lot of that isn't even probably happening right now, just because of COVID and that short-staffed nature of what we're in, so.
Yeah, and I think a lot of the issues, you know, you're raising and talking about checking in with kids and making sure kids are, have had something to eat and, and, you know, tech, technology issues. I mean, there are so many things that are barriers to just all the things a teacher has to squeeze in in a day, you know, not to mention their own planning time. I, I would think that would be a significant issue.
Yeah, and a lot of these issues aren't necessarily, like, they're just, they have so much else going on. So like, one thing last year that happened, and something that we realized with Project Rooted is, what was turned off last year? It was drinking fountains. Drinking fountains, like, in itself plays such a huge role in our schools. So I was dropping something off at Fulton, and I don't even remember how we got in the conversation. I think they asked, do you have any, do you have a few water bottles that you could spare? Because our kids don't, aren't coming with water bottles. And so we're using plastic cups, we're using plastic water bottles, and we're going through them like crazy. And it's becoming a hassle. And so I'm like, let me see what I can do for you. And so I asked them, how many do you need? What does that look like for your school? And they gave me a number. Well, then I'm like, oh, gosh, if this is happening at one school, what's happening at all these other schools and how are they handling it? So we made a point to reach out to each and every school and ask, is this a problem in your school, and how can we help? And then we took all those numbers, which was fifteen hundred water bottles. We found the funding, we brought it to the schools, we made it happen. Now those water bottles stay at school, which is something that I think is essential to ensuring that kids are staying hydrated on a daily basis. And it's something that's essential for our health as well. And so just reaching out and asking, like, where are you struggling? What do you need? And how can we help you? Not just on school board level, but as a community level, and bringing more awareness to those things. So people can step up and help where they need it, I think is really essential. I mean, we are stronger together. So I think just even sometimes we talk about policies, but also sitting on the school board and being aware of what those issues are. I think it's really important to then take that outside and say, how can we overcome this with our community partnerships that we have? So there, it's not just sitting on that seat, but it's working beyond that seat. And really being collaborative as a community, I think is essential. Does that answer your question? Sorry?
I think we're good. What, what, what do you think would be the biggest challenge for you personally? If you're elected to the school board and, and, and serving in that role, what do you think would challenge you the most?
A huge part of the, about being on the school board is financial solvency and ensuring that the budget is withheld and managed properly. It's like a jigsaw puzzle. I don't know if you've ever dove into the school budget and finances. But I sat down and I met with Kevin for an hour and a half, and I could have sat there with him for days just asking questions after question after question after question. And honestly, when speaking with the current, some of the current board members too, unless they have an extremely strong financial background, like Tom Byrne, who does, it is probably one of the hardest things to learn, they indicated. And so I would say overcoming that. I run our finances for Project Rooted. We also have, my husband and I have a small business, so we do it on that side as well. But the school district is a whole different level to that. So I have this giant book that is a lot of pages, as you can see. And I've been just working my way through that slowly, asking questions, emailing, saying, what does this mean? How does that work? So I think that's something really important to understand. But I think it's also something that takes time. I don't think I'm gonna learn it in a month. I think it's that you, something that you do gradually as you're on the board. Hence why it's a four-year term and not a one-year term, or a two-year term for most. So I, I think it's something that just comes with time. But I, I live for growth. I live for challenges, and I know that's something that I can get a grasp on, just with a little education and asking the right questions.
Have, have there been any issues that have arisen in recent years that come before the school board that maybe you would have voted differently than, than the majority decided? Any, any issues where maybe you had a, a, a different idea or that you would have followed?
Oh, gosh. That's, that's a tough question. And honestly, not, not any issues that I can specifically recall in that area that I wouldn't have voted differently. I, I think they do everything, everything that they do is very purposeful. I always believe we're always gonna have differences in opinions and beliefs. But I think it's essential working together as a board to over, overcome those, which is why they have their committee meetings, which is why they have the board meeting. I think Stan is phenomenal in providing the facts and the information, and then making an educated, educate, sorry, a decision based on that, educational decision based on that. And so I, I think that when in that role, you're seeing things on a different level, but asking those tough questions, I think is essential. And I, I do think they do a good job at that. So no, in short, I cannot recall anything specific that I would have done differently.
Have they, have they given you, braced you for the time commitment? Do you have concerns about that? You're, you're a pretty busy woman.
You know, I actually don't at all. There's a, there's a quote, "If you want something done, ask a busy person." I think it is. And I think it was Benjamin Franklin or someone very successful. What?
Someone who was really busy.
Yes, someone that was really busy. I put my heart and soul into every single thing I do. And I don't tackle something, or I don't accept something that doesn't align with my, my personal values and my beliefs. Or I don't take on something that I know I can't do, or that I think I can't, can't do. I know I can do this role, and I know I can do it well. I have a lot of skills that I think that can benefit the school board as a whole. I'm extremely passionate about our community and our kids and driving it forward. I really wanna see us create this beautiful future for our children that they can be proud of. And I was raised on this foundation, and my grandfather said it all the time, what you do for yourself dies with you, but what you do for others lives on for eternity. And I will always live by that mission. It's why I'm so mission-driven in my professional career, my nonprofit career, the boards and commissions I'm a part of, they all correlate in some way. But I always promise I will put my heart and soul into what I commit to doing, and I am committed to doing this a hundred percent.
What are some things that differentiate Whitney Sanger from others either running for the school board or currently serving on the school board?
Yeah, so one of the things, I listen hard, I love hard, and I believe that we can overcome anything. So I always think that there is another way. When someone says it's impossible, it can't happen, I'm like, you know what, we're gonna figure it out. We're gonna make it happen. We're gonna do this together, and we're gonna achieve it. And I think that's one of the biggest things about me is I'm so just driven by helping people and helping the community. I always know there's another way. But one of the other things is, I feel like I'm a really good connector and collaborator. I know personally, I can never do anything alone. I know that with HACAP, I know that as a mother, I know that with Project Rooted, that it is so much more to it than just myself. Like, I need to look beyond myself, but together, I know we can achieve it. So I would say collaboration is my strong suit. I, like I said, I, I love hard, and I have this deep, driven passion for our community and seeing it successful. And this was how, this is how I'm choosing to do it. So this is where I'm choosing to put my energy in. I know I can make a difference. I know I can make an impact. So I hope to have, I hope to have that opportunity.
And, and was it Eldon Herring that was your grandfather? Okay, I was trying to remember and couldn't quite place it. So, yep, well, so.
He was on the school board from, I think I saw nineteen ninety-four to two thousand, I believe. So back in the nineties. I was born in nineteen ninety, so I was very young when he was on school board. And then I think after that, he was on the County Board of Supervisors. I believe right after that. So I think that's why he didn't run for the other term, not a hundred percent positive. I tried to find some old photos of when he was running, but I couldn't find them. So if you have any at the TH, look in your archives, I would gladly take them.
All right. Well, we appreciate your time today. Appreciate your willingness to, to step up and serve in the community. And thanks for sharing your views with us and wish you luck in the rest of the way.
You bet. Just, so I have an idea. What does the, I guess, the process look like of endorsing candidates, and when do you typically do that?
Well, we'll, we'll try to have our editorials out. We're, we'll be writing editorials on city council as well, so, and the mayor's race, so we have a few to do. And we have obviously a lot of school board candidates, but I guess I would be shooting for probably about ten days from now, maybe?
Awesome.
That sounds about right, Dustin. I, I think that's kind of what we're.
He's like, maybe give me a little bit more time. I saw that hesitancy, like, oh, okay. Well, do you have any other questions for me at all? And if, if you don't now, and you wanna follow up with an email or whatnot, I'm always here, happy to answer. Phone call, email, coffee, whatever it be, just to chat, even beyond the school board role. But how could we work together in the community to, to create change that we wanna see and, and, you know, ensuring that it's a beautiful place for all to live?
I appreciate that. Thanks very much.
Yeah, actually, I would like to touch base on one more thing, because I think it's really important, and I'm really excited that we're doing it, if that's okay. Do you have a few minutes?
Sure.
Okay. One of the people that I met with was Deir, and diversity, equity, inclusion is, is really important to me. I, first, I think, first and foremost, it's important to me, it's for me to work on it myself. And for me to be aware of my own biases, whatever that looked like, especially when you're approaching a school board seat. So I'm personally working on that. But one of the things that I think he's gonna be amazing at, and I talked to him in depth, was just his approach to what that looks like, looks like in our schools. So I, I think that was very interesting, how he's gonna do that. And I would like to support that position long-term, as much as we possibly can. But how we approach that is, you know, going to the schools and being with them for a full week. So he's listening and observing that classroom, those classrooms at specific school for a whole entire week. Year two is about planning, year three is about implementation, year four is about education, and year five is about reevaluation of the program that's in place. And I think this plays such a vital role in ensuring that our classrooms are equitable and inclusive for all. So every single person feels welcome into the classroom.
And then, so this is the, the district's equity coordinator that you're referring to?
Yeah. And so I really enjoyed hearing about his approach and what that looks like. For me, I make every effort to get out in the community and connect with the community members. So like with Project Rooted, the marshalleys was a big one that we served. So we ensured that they were receiving the food that was culturally appropriate for them. I think that was huge, as we had all these, these meal sites, but it wasn't necessarily culturally appropriate for them, so they weren't reaching out and utilizing those services. So learning about that. I think it's important to engrain ourselves in other cultures and just get that out in there in communities. So attending the Latinx Festival, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and things like that, and bringing some of that into the classroom where we can learn and listen through music, through dance, through language, through all of that. So I would really want to make sure that is, that is a top priority in our schools as well, and just celebrating those cultures. Because that's where we build that deep connection with each other, and I felt it at the Latinx Festival, just dancing with them, you know, holding hands as a community, really embracing it and being there with them instead of doing things for them. I think that's such a huge part, is standing beside them. And that was one of those experiences, and I do think we can bring a lot of that to the classroom, and I hope to see more of that.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that.
You bet. That's it. No more. Again, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. I am a pretty open book. I love to share and just connect with people. So I appreciate you allowing me this opportunity to do so, and I hope to have your support.
All right. It was great to hear from you. Thanks for your time, Whitney.
Yes, have a good day.